I'm doing well. How are you doing?
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Always good to see you, too.
I'm here with Kim and our Mr. Per and I can just say a quick ready number.
Cool. Good to hear.
So we are live currently on Vimeo, so everyone gets on board if you can let them know or if I can let them know.
I will do that. I'm just pulling up my American flag.
All right. You want a screen share privileges or something?
Yes, I will for this one.
All right, done.
There'll be two of me here in a minute, but not quite yet.
Okay.
We are live. Okay, making sure I have mics right. I do. Good.
Hi, Mrs. Matt. This is Carrington over here with Front Runner. We see that you're trying to adjust there. What you may want to do is have your face going towards the window versus your back at the window.
Okay, I'll do a little switcheroo here. All right, we will do it.
All right.
Oh, yeah, that was better.
A lot better. Thank you.
Yeah, I was like, okay, there. Thank you guys.
That's exciting stuff.
Yeah. Hi, Rachel. How are you doing?
Good.
Good.
You know, hanging in there.
Are we being quiet?
We are live. That is the reason we are being quiet. Sorry.
Rachel, did you see the new tennis courts?
No, I have not. I'm gonna have to go look at them.
New tennis courts at Raymond Park?
I figured, yeah. I knew that's where they were being installed. I saw them getting pulled up. Yeah, I'm trying. Gloria's having some trouble with the link. I'm trying to talk her through it. We got you. Yay. Hi, Gloria.
That's right. I had to go back and update it. I was panicking. Thank you so much for sending that back to me again.
Happy to do it. Glad we got you. Okay, everybody, we have a quorum because the lovely Ms. Williams is here, and so I'm gonna let Randy connect real quick.
Dr. Hanson, this is Carrington here with Front Runner. Got a quick question for you before we begin.
Yes, sir.
I would like to know if you are wanting to record this call or not.
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Can you see me, Timothy?
Yes, I can.
My friend. All right. Wait a minute. My hair looks grayer, a lot grayer than yours, Tim.
It's the light. It's just the light.
I mean, while I'm in my office, I'm getting all kind of calls. Can I? We gotta figure out how to mute this, too. There we go. I'll mute over here.
Okay, everyone, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with, sorry, pledge of allegiance. If I could have everyone rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, everyone. Before we begin, the content of our meeting today, we are going to start with a moment of silence. And so if everyone could join me in that for both the loss of George Floyd and for everyone else that has been lost over the years due to racial injustice. Thank you so much. I believe, well, I believe we are here mostly to handle the e-learning hotspot RFP, so I'm going to hand that over to Ken.
Thank you. You want me to share the screen with the presentation on it?
I can or you can. Whichever you would prefer.
You want to just start it up? That's fine. Thank you.
Give me just a second to get there. Sorry.
Yeah, so the city of Indianapolis has, they created this e-learning technology advisory group. The idea was to create connectivity solutions and end-user devices for students across Marion County. So it is a county-wide program. So all of the public schools, all the charter schools are part of this. And the team they put together was a mix of folks in the local industry as well as the Marion County K-12 CTOs and CIOs. So you can see some of the names there. Claire Fiddy and Green is in charge of the Richard M. Fairbanks Foundation, and they're actually driving the e-learning grant currently. And then we, you know, we even had some folks from Where Speeds Matter, which is a network, you know, a computer networking company, and then even Cummins was part of it as well. So this is, they issued an RFP focused on student connectivity, and this was the first of two that they issued. And they were open to all solutions. It just became pretty clear with the timeline we're looking at for the start of school that selecting a mobile hotspot solution, taking a 4G signal and converting it to Wi-Fi so it works with all our devices, was the simplest route and the quickest as well. So they did receive responses from AT&amp;T, Kajit, who we've used, Kajit in the past, T-Mobile, Verizon, and we've used Verizon in the past and Comcast. And after reviewing the responses and scoring from all of the folks on the tag team, T-Mobile was selected as the award winner. So there's some, here you can see the breakdown of the scores. So T-Mobile had the lowest price point, so they got the most points for price. And everything else was relatively close between most of the, you know, the mobile companies. Comcast scored a little lower because they can't enforce education sites only like the mobile vendors can. So what that means is we would have a difficult time blocking the student or someone else in the family from using Netflix or Hulu or something to that effect when the dollars that are being spent are intended to be used just for education purposes. So it wasn't super close overall. T-Mobile was the clear winner, so they, we can go forward to the next slide, which is a breakdown of the two options that they listed. So if you do a 12-month contract, they'll take, there's an $84 subsidy, so basically covers the cost of the hotspot. So there's no upfront cost to purchase them. It's really just the monthly contract fee that we would pay. If you do a 24-month contract, you get the same $84 subsidy, but then they also basically give you monthly credit for going with the longer contract time. You can see the net cost per line is $15.17 as opposed to $20 on the 12-month contract. So the other interesting note about the T-Mobile hotspots, you can see that I mentioned that they're unlocked. That means that we will be able to use them. So in two years, let's say there's a different option for 4G networks for students, we could reuse these. We wouldn't have to go purchase new ones. So that's a really nice feature to have. It doesn't lock us into just T-Mobile going forward. So these are the total costs. So just laying it out here, we're working under the assumption of 2,500 hotspots needed. That's about 22% of our students. Of course, we average about two students per household generally, so, you know, that would cover potentially more students in that 25 than just the 2,500. Each hotspot can provide broadband access up to eight connections. We're gonna limit it to four. That just gives us the, you know, to ensure that there's enough bandwidth for everybody that's connected and allows for multiple students in the same household. 12-month plan is $600,000. The 24-month plan with the discount is $910,200. So that's obviously the better value over the two-month period. I will tell you that the second RFP that is being worked on right, actually, it's already been issued and responses ran. I've reviewed them. There's a call tomorrow. That is for a dedicated e-learning network for Marion County. So what that looks like, it could be a number of different flavors. e-learning network for Marion County. So what that looks like, it could be a number of different flavors. It could mean that there's a custom-built 4G network just for K-12. It could be a combination of that and the mobile companies being involved. There are strictly fiber, fiber optic companies that have you know, responded to that RFP. So it, it could go a number of different ways. The idea being that at some point, we would have 4G available essentially for all students in Marion County. So the, the funding for this is, there's really two parts. One, we received an e-learning grant from the city. It's only $109,000. And the expectation is from the tag team is that the CARES Act dollars would cover the, really, this part of the program for now. So, you know, I highlighted in green the 24 months there just because that is the better value. And another thing to consider is that there are a number of bills in Congress right now to allow E-Rate to apply to mobile or, yeah, mobile hotspots, for example. Really just any network connectivity off-campus, because right now E-Rate restricts us to just on-campus. So anything that we have that might go to an apartment complex or a housing addition somewhere, E-Rate won't cover any of that. So the, the expectation is that that's eventually going to be approved, which would be huge for us going forward. It really helps sustain the program because I don't know what the percentage will be, but just an idea like network equipment that we buy now, given our free produce rate, we get 90% discounts. So our network, our on-campus network is as good or better than any other in the state, I'm pretty sure. There, you know, the DOE surveys that have come out, I think we're in the, in the top for our on-campus network. So this will just give us an opportunity to extend that out to the students in their homes. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have. If there are no questions, I would just ask for approval to move forward with the purchase of these hotspots for the 24-month plan.
I'll make a motion to take the 24-month deal.
Julie has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Randy has seconded it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we're gonna take a vote. Julie, do you want to do the roll call or would you prefer if I did?
I can.
Okay.
Rachel?
Yes.
Randy?
Yay.
Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And Terry and Michelle are not here, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then it was unanimous.
Okay, so we have approved the RFP unanimously. Um, that is the end of our agenda, unless Dr. Hanson has something he needs to add.
Ken, I just wanted to verify, we'll get these, this order in, and we should have them before the start of the school year?
Yeah, so the, the direction I got from T-Mobile was if we could have a PO to them last week, they would guarantee before the end of July. So we'll, I'll get with Linda tonight and get the process started. We've already entered them in as a vendor, so we just need to enter the PO, and then we should be ready to roll. So I think we're gonna come in right around the beginning of the school year. I should also, they're unlimited data plans, so.
Okay, well, everyone, thank you so much for hopping on this meeting real quick. I know that we took some time out of your day, especially on Election Day. And I just really wanted to thank everyone so that we could get this going so that Ken could get everything ordered and we can be prepared for this beginning of the school year.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.